Okay. So I call the May 26th meeting of the school committee to order. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see such a large crowd here. We're not really used to having significant crowds at our school committee meetings, so we really want to thank everyone for coming this evening. I want to thank Mr. Martin, Dr. Milacheski, and many others who were involved in having this meeting here tonight and their leadership in making this happen. But I also want to thank our hosts here at the Brook Charter High School for welcoming us into this space. It's a remarkable space, first of all. And we did a little bit of research on Brook this week, and a couple of things that stuck out to me. Every Brook graduating student here is required to take three AP courses, complete three AP courses, and they're required to take three years of computer science. So it's a great example of not only what a great rigorous curriculum for learners looks like, but also what it looks like to really prepare our kids for the world ahead. So thanks to everyone here at Brook for that. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by RCTV, so that's why we've got a man with a camera there. It's not being aired live back in Redding, but the recording will be available on YouTube within the next few days, and we expect it'll be part of their normal cable rotation as well. So thank you to RCTV for the support. Folks who might be regular school committee watchers probably noticed that we're down one member this evening. Our Chair Tom Wise unfortunately was diagnosed with COVID earlier this week, so of course he couldn't be here. I want to say that Tom was a huge advocate for us having this meeting here tonight, and he sent his regrets that he wasn't able to join us. And before we jump in, I had a lot more than I was prepared to say, but given the younger audience than we're used to, I just want to say we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge things that happened around the country this week and some of the difficult things that have been happening over the last few weeks, which I know have worn on many of us and many of our educators, and our thoughts go out to those families impacted. So with all that as an intro and moving on from a relatively heavy subject, tonight, I think, is going to be a fairly positive and celebratory evening, particularly as we hear from Mr. Martin about all the great things that are happening under his leadership and a number of the other items on our agenda. So in terms of our agenda, we'll start with public comment, so we'll invite anybody who wants to come up and address the committee to do so. Public comment is intended for topics that are not on our agenda. So if you want to talk about something that's on the agenda, you should ask to get a hold off until that time and just raise your hand when the time comes. Then we'll move through our consent agenda. We'll have reports from the staff and then also from members of the committee, and we're going to take new business out of order tonight, so I'll have a motion for that when the time comes. In the new business section, we've got the Students of Color and Allies for Equity, Justice, and Inclusion, as well as the Friends of Reading Mecca here, who are going to introduce their respective groups and missions, and we're very excited about that. I see some nerves over there. You guys are going to be great. We'll have Mr. Martin with the Mecca program update. We're going to review and approve edits to policy JFAB, which is about school choice. And then Dr. Chatterjee is here from our library's Equity and Social Justice Division to talk to us a little bit about the pair group, the advisory group that she's established, and invite us to establish a liaison to that group. Then we'll move on to old business. So a couple of weeks ago, we established, or a couple of meetings ago, we established the Army Just Track Reaming Committee. Today, we'll name the remaining members of that committee. And then our final agenda item, we'll be voting on the final FY23 budget capital plan after town meetings appropriations. So that's our agenda for tonight. We think it's going to be a relatively brisk one. We're used to four-hour meetings, but we don't see that happen this evening, so that will kick us off with public comment. Is there anybody that wants to speak on anything that's not on the agenda this evening?
You can come up and just take the mic if you want to.
No? Okay. All right, so we'll move to the consent agenda. So I'll just handle the motions tonight to make things easier for us and move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Chuck with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? And it's five-zero. Okay, so moving on to reports, I'll just start maybe at the end of the table here with Ms. Baton.
I have no reports.
Okay. Dr. Harding?
I have no reports.
Dr. Stice?
No reports.
Mr. Martin?
I have a report.
You have a report?
I just wanted to...
No.
Oh, no, you have a whole presentation. Yeah, we'll hold on to that. Dr. Milacheski?
I just quickly want to say thank you to all the families and all the students here. It's so nice to see you all here to join us for our school committee meeting, especially because I see so many students of all ages here. So thank you for coming out and hope you enjoyed the pizza. It was especially nice of me to come back. I spent time here as an educator, as at the Frederick Bill School, at Jeremiah Burke High School. So a lot of time is stashed right around the corner, so when I pulled up, it brought back a lot of memories for me being back here in the neighborhood. But I know that so often we ask our Boston families to make the commitment, our parents make the commitment to attend school committee meetings by coming to Reading. And I say even more than that, we ask our students every single day to come on to Boston and take the trip to Reading. So I think it's a small gesture on our part for us to come here and have a DVD here, but we know that that is just one night for us. We know it's the day-to-day, the commitment that our families and students made to be a part of our community. We are so thrilled with all of our students that, who are Boston resident students that are part of the Reading Public Schools. So thank you. We are thrilled that you are Reading Rockets and thank you for being here with us tonight. My updates tonight are all going to come through. Millie, Arba Jay Thomas, if you don't know Millie, she's the CEO of Mecca. She wanted me to share a couple of updates. First, she says that she would have loved to be here tonight. Unfortunately, she had another commitment that ends a little bit later, so she's not able to be here, but she wanted me to share a couple of things. First, she wanted me to invite everyone in the audience to an event next Friday, which is put on by Mecca. It's about the history of desegregation in Boston via busing at the Huntington Theater. So again, I'm going to share this information now verbally, but I'll send this all out writing to the community too, so if you don't catch it, that's okay. But again, next Friday at Huntington Theater, an event, a movie showing of the history of desegregation via busing at Huntington Theater. Secondly, we know that coming up in a couple of weeks is the conference, Living the Legacy Conference for Educators on June 10th. She wanted me to raise the public accountability for our team right here, that she'd love to have a full table of Reading representatives. There's amazing speakers on Equity. She's also encouraging any school committee members to participate and attend. There's Nubian Tours happening most weekends during the summer and being led by our youth to learn about civil rights theaters in our community. Tour the Mecca Headquarters exhibit, which shows the history of Mecca. And then lastly, this is a request from everyone here. She wanted me to share that she needs everyone to call their senators to thank them, because yesterday they approved an increase of $1 million for Mecca. Plus, in addition to that $1 million for Mecca, $500,000 to do equity work. So I think that she and we are really encouraged by that. So thank you to all the senators for their work to help us through that process. Most importantly, we are very excited to hear from our families, and we're very excited to hear from our students. So here we go.
Okay, one thing important to do liaison reports. I'll just report quickly on ARBA and, you know, all the members of the committee are certainly well aware of this, but for the community and for folks watching at home, the ARBA committee did approve the $2 million request that we had to support a new early literacy curriculum. So that's fantastic news. That will go into implementation next year. You know, we've got some principals who are figuring out how that's going to happen, but it's going to happen. So we also had an ARBA meeting last night where we heard a number of additional requests. I think we're getting sort of to the end of the presentations that we're expecting to hear. The survey is open for another few weeks, and then once that closes, the committee will come back together and start doing the hard work of figuring out how to allocate the remaining dollars to the deserving causes in town. Carla?
I went to a meeting, and I can't remember which meeting I went to. So if I think about it by the time we finish, I will report out.
I have no report.
The Policy Subcommittee met on May 11th, and I will comment more on that when we discuss the policies tonight. Just one quick update, the RCTV board met earlier this week, and one exciting piece or update, Anna Fuevas, who teaches at the high school, will be continuing on next year as well, teaching video production, so we're excited about that.
I remembered. Sean and I attended the Audit Subcommittee, and we voted on the Reading Municipal Light Department budget.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go on to new business now, so first I have a motion to take out of order items E1 through E4. Is there a second? Carla, seconds. All in favor? All opposed? All right, here's five-zero. Okay, so now we're on to some of our guests tonight, so we've got the Students of Color and Allies for Equity, Justice, and Inclusion, and the Friends of Reading Mecca. Who wants to take the mic? Who wants to take the lead? Somebody's going to have to do it.
Hi. Welcome. I'm Deja. I'm co-president, and I'm from Boston.
I'm Jeremiah. I'm also co-president. I'm from Reading.
I'm Lena Mauth, and I'm from Reading. I'm secretary.
I'm Aaron Palma. I'm from Reading.
I'm Samaje, an ally, and I'm a Boston resident.
My name is Bianca Ferguson. I'm an ally, and I'm a Boston resident.
My name is Camille Owen. I am the event planner, and I'm also a Boston resident.
My name is Nathan Orteles. I'm an ally, and I'm a Reading resident.
Okay, I wanted to explain to you guys what EJL stands for. So first, we have Equity, and that's when there's no patriotism or discrimination. Then there's Justice, a concept of more righteousness based on ethics, reason, law, natural law, and religion. And then there's Inclusion, and that's when everyone is being included in a cooperative
Some of our objectives are to create awareness, educate on the biggest issue that needs to be talked about, build an understanding of what we feel on a daily basis, and train our community in case you find yourself or anyone in these situations.
We wanted to give you guys a sneak peek of what we have in our previous presentations, and so we have two videos to show you guys. And while you guys watch this video, you guys can reflect yourselves how you would feel,
You guys can come sit. Yeah, so they can...
Oh, no, they can.
You guys can come sit, because we're just going to do video right now.
Here's a video on generational wealth.
All right, so that was the first video, and next we have a video that is more of like a poetry video, and this is another video that covers one of our topics in our previous presentation. So it's a 17-year-old named Ronald Vincent at the 2018 teen who speaks poetry slang, We pledge allegiance to your flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for whom? For you, for some, not for us, not for our people. So please stop saying we equal with your flag of red, white, and blue in one hand. Beat us. And to a black, you blue with the other beat us. And to a none, beat us. Until we can't walk straight, then you put us in chains and be lucky. But for the ones of us who are so lucky, you tell us to put our hands up, kiss some sycamore, sing tribute to your privilege, and then you pull the trigger, pull the trigger into our bodies, lay down on your realm, pull the trigger into your fitness, empty, pull the trigger until we make no even in news, and then when our children cry, we have to look our children in the eyes and tell them that they have to be cautious, that when they walk your streets, they have to do so in fear that they have to spend an entirety of their life looking over their shoulder, because you will hunt them down and you will bury them, either in a prison system that aims to disenfranchise them or the dirt beneath their feet. This is all because of that same racism that you love this state no more exists, but we all know that that same racism is the reason that when we want to put a hood on, we resist. The reason that when we go to get these jobs, we're dismissed at the door. The reason that when we go to shop, we're watches in your stores. That racism is the reason that us saying your pledge of allegiance feels a lot like a root canal or a whip's impact against our flesh or a tie to our head or a bullet in our back or tear gas at a Black Lives Matter protest. That racism is the reason that three women clished their purses as I walked through the entrance of this very building. That I have to remember that the system I was born into is built to work against me. Hurts that I have to remember. Hurts that I have to remember. Hurts that I have... Hurts that I actually have to remember that you will happily invest more money into the preservation of wildlife than you ever will into the preservation of Black Lives. Let me ask you all the question. When y'all turn on your TVs and witness another Black body laid on your concrete, what do y'all see? Another murder? Another sad story? Another funeral? Do you see the aftermath? I see another child that lost their father, another single woman trying to raise a man, another broken home which leads to another child that grows up, and someone's the same fate as their father, which means another Black woman that outlives her adolescent son in this country practices a culture that blacks equal whites with blacks, and we love to say that black don't crack me while y'all shadow or melanin like huts. My back breaks for everybody who lay at our feet, for every memory I tries to erase within your war zones. Late nights reveal that my PTSD has found its way to the surface, and my hate for this country reminds me that I'm foreign patriarchy, so it's a little ironic that I pledge allegiance to your flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for whom? Okay, that is, so that's a sneak peek of our presentation, and once again, we are Students of Color and Allies for Equity, Justice, and Inclusion. And I just wanted to thank you guys for coming and allowing us to come and speak and introduce our group. And also, I wanted to say we're going to have a fundraiser on June 18th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and it's going to be a movie night, so you can bring your family, you can bring your friends. And there's going to be guest speaker Jason Lewis and Jamil Adams, and yeah, it's going to be a really fun family event. You can get more information, actually, the information's going to get sent out pretty soon. I think you can find out at the...
The superintendent's office. Newsletter.
Newsletter. You can find it on the newsletter. And so, yeah, thank you guys so much for having us. Bye.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Sharad Lutstra. I am one of the co-founders of Friends of Reading Mecca and also the co-chair.
I am Teresa Wiggins and also a co-chair. Is that her? We're Friends of Reading Mecca.
Hi, I'm Lamanda Epps, and I am one of the co-vice presidents.
I am Tish McCarroll, and I'm one of the members of this team.
So Friends of Reading Mecca started a few years back. We took a little break due to COVID, and we are happy to say that we're back in both wars with this wonderful team, but we do still need more parent volunteers from both Boston and Reading. This group is made up of both Boston and Reading families, and the purpose of it is to create events and opportunities for both of our families to share and build relationships and to be strong allies for our children on both sides, so that the hope is that these children will build relationships that last forever. So we host events, and we hope that you've either been to one or heard of one, and if you haven't, please join us. I know our last event was Rallos Genu, which was a big turnout, so we are looking to do that again in the near future. But the next event that we're looking at is...
I met with my other co-vice president. We haven't decided on when just yet, or well, what, it'll entail, but it'll be in August, and a collaboration of Caribbean Cultural and Visiting.
So we do ask that, you know, if you are interested, please come out to our events. We love to see the children, and it's all about them and making and creating a better environment for them, where they have networks on both sides of town. Being Boston students, they are on the bus, long hours between school and home, and sometimes they want to participate in events, and I know if anyone else's family is like me, my children weren't going to anyone's house, so I didn't even know. So I think building the relationship between the families and the parents as well as the students is really important, and it's key to making a successful career in school for all of our kids. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you quickly to the two groups. First, Friends of Reading Mecca, thanks for all your work to bring both the Reading and Boston community together and create access and opportunity for all of our students. So thank you. And also want to thank our student group, Students of Color and Allies for Equity, Justice, and Inclusion. The favorite part of my job, and I think a lot of our job, is seeing leadership and advocacy from our students, and tonight we see that, an example of a group, I think, that has come together and advocating and leading in a lot of different ways, not only for our Reading community, but for Reading Public Schools, but our Reading community and beyond. So I just thank all of you for the work that you've done this year, the work ahead. Change happens, mostly, I believe, through students, and you can see your leadership and all the work that you do. So thank you tonight for coming. Thank you for sharing a bit of what you do, and I think all of us are eager to learn more, and I think our Reading Public Schools community is eager to learn more. So thank you for giving us the presentation and the teaser for the work that you do. Thank you. Okay, so our next agenda item is the Mecca Program Update. Mr. Martin, I will hand it to you.
Martin wants everyone back. Do you have that mic? Do you? Huh?
Before I start, I think I just want to make sure that we all introduce ourselves
for everyone in the audience. Obviously, everyone knows me as the current Spartan of Mecca Director, and I just want to start at the end and pass the mic down so that you know who we are on the table.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Botan, and I'm the Director of Finance and Operations for Reading Public Schools.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Lutstra. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Learning and Teaching.
Hi, I'm Jen Stiles, and I'm the Director. I'm not a Director. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Hi, everyone. Tom Milacheski, I'm the Superintendent. We also have a few of our principals with us too, so we'll ask them to come up and say hello in due time themselves, much to their excitement. There we go, reading.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Lutstra of the Cleveland Killam School.
Hi, Beth Latta, Principal of Durham School.
Ricky Shankman, Principal of Parkview School.
I'm Sean Brandt. I'm a member of the school committee and the current vice chair.
Good evening. I'm Carla Azaro, and I'm a member of the school committee.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Robinson.
Hello, I'm Erin Kaplan, also a member of the school committee.
Hi, everybody. Sarah Lutstra, member of the school committee, and Parker Mom. Nobody said what schools their kids go to since we're going back. I have children at Joshua Eaton, Parker, and at the high school. Um, I have children at Joshua Eaton, Parker, and at the high school.
So my children, I had two, or all of them went through Barrows and they've all gone through there. And Parker and my last one just graduated, officially graduated, I think. Graduated Sunday, I guess. So a lot of, a lot of fun years at all three of those schools.
I have four children and all of them attended Joshua Eaton, Parker. I have one at the high school. I have two in college and one who just graduated college.
And I, I have the little ones on the committee. Um, I have two at Wood End. Shout out to Miss Crowley's class, yeah? Uh, and I have one more who is in Rise as well. All right, so now we'll hand it off to Mr. Martin. Thank you for that. Good catch.
No problem. Thank you. Um, again, thank you everybody for coming out. It seems like just yesterday, it was July 5th, and it was myself, Dr. Hardy, Dr. Melicheski, having our first meeting in Central Office. And this is where I was pretty much laying out my vision for the Meco program. And that vision was honestly my experience going through the system in Wayland. That was everything that I laid out, along with what we could have done at that time that could have made us even better. Come November, it kinda all came full circle at the Meco Directors Association meeting. And this is where all the Meco directors across the state count. And we meet and we talk about, talk about the stuff in our district. And my director was one of the guest speakers. And it was, it came full circle for me to hear what he did to make my experience what it was. And then to see all the directors across the state applaud him for being the man to show what this world looks like. To be the man to, um, show what directors are supposed to be doing in their district and what districts are supposed to be doing to support their directors. Um, so for me, it was interesting to see, like, I was the tree. I was the student that benefited from his plan, um, his vision for what Meco across the state should, should, should look like. Um, so it came full circle and it was really exciting for me to see that. Today, I kinda wanna share with you all some of the things that we did this year and from where we started. I quote Carla in, in one of our What Is Meco videos, and when she said that, you know, we, she, we, her familiar CEO, it had a candid conversation about the state of Reading Meco, which wasn't in a good place. And then fast forward to November, at this Directors Association, I bumped into her. And, um, she goes, Curtis, what you all doing in Reading right now is amazing, in her story. Um, so a few months, we've been able to move the, the district forward and get everyone to support and buy into doing what the work that needs to be done so that everyone can benefit from the program. And then going through my process, you know, one of the, the issues that were at hand is that no one really knew what Meco was, why it was here. So we did a video and, um, to get that message out. But the first thing I started with was our district leadership trip to Boston. So the first thing on my agenda was to make sure we got everyone from Central Office, all of our superintendents, all of our principals, to come to Boston, meet with families, just to see our community. In order to teach your students, you have to know where they come from and what their life is like. And, um, in our district, there was just a big disconnect between Boston and Reading. And, uh, we started the day off with breakfast at Brothers in Madison Square. That's the picture here at the bottom. From there, we went to Pope John Park in Dorchester, where we actually ran into the mayor of Boston, Kim Jamie, who is a Reading Meco alum. And from there, we went to Washington Park, where we had an opportunity to meet families. And then my favorite part, the picture at the top, we have much as links. This, this day was extremely important for me. Um, and again, it comes back when I get this idea from what we did in high school. Uh, my senior year at high school, really, we had a raised class. We've had it for over 40 years, in which we always came to Boston. And this was actually one of the trips we did as a class, a senior class, to get to go Boston, even though throughout the years, we always, our friends always come to Boston to stay in our homes. Um, so this is a really big day for me to kick it off, to let everyone in our leadership roles know what the program is and what we're trying to do and how we're trying to build a better future for our children. After this, this led to a What Is Meco, the What Is Meco video for our staff, where all our principals shared at their school before we started. After that, I conducted a few professional developments with some staff members who also didn't see the video yet. And then we collaborated with school committee, um, some of our principals and Central Office to make a video for the community. And once we made that video, you know, the emails, the cards from students, from parents, just really happy with the vision, what this program could be and how it could benefit every student in the Reading public school system. And since that moment, the support has been really great. And, um, that's how we kicked off the year. So one of the things that Dr. Hardy and Dr. Melicheski and I discussed on that, June, July 5th, was increasing access for our Boston families. Um, so right out the gate in October, with what we had, we were able to add late buses. That was something that we hadn't had in probably more than 15 years, um, if I can get something off my head. And, um, the late buses was important because it allowed the high school students to play sports to get home and not have to take an MBTA from, from Reading. It allowed the students who didn't play sports to go to their friend's house and hang out and build on their relationships. It allowed kids to go meet with teachers, um, and get extra help. And some of our middle school students participate in school plays. When you have the ability to, um, connect and build and join in extracurricular activities, that's how we build these friendships and these bonds through sports, drama, plays, and, you know. So that was really, really important. From there, one of the things is, um, I was able to approve what our budget was a lot of the events that we wanted to do to bring the communities together. We also had Desi approve for the first time an HBCU tour for our high school students. Uh, we weren't able to go, but that was due to COVID restrictions that the schools have. But that is something that we will be starting next school year and looking to do every single year, to take the kids from Reading and kids from Boston, all Reading public school students, to Atlanta to visit some of our HBCUs. Now, what really had things kick off for us is when our school committee increased, approved the, in a row, an increase of 40 students. That approval allowed us to get the funding to be a real Meco program. From there, we were able to, they also approved us to hire five Meco coordinators for our elementary schools. Um, our elementary school is the foundation to building this program. Um, and that's where we build all our relationships. Having a Meco coordinator in your schools full-time is essential. It was essential to my success as well. So I'm excited about that. It also allowed us to add a third bus to our district, which separated the middle school and high school students. Uh, our high school students no longer had to be at school an hour before school started. Uh, they now get around maybe 30 minutes, sometimes 40 minutes before school. That allowed us to start the buses about 45 or 50 minutes later and still had to cut the ride down to about an hour and 15 minutes during the winter season. Since the weather got warm, it's actually been a little bit shorter. So again, to repeat, we started the bus route 40 to 50 minutes later and we cut the bus ride from about two, two and a half hours to an hour and 15 minutes. Prior, we were driving an hour around Boston before we even got to the bus, to the highway. So that was very important and huge for increasing access and getting our kids here. We don't no longer have to wake up at like 4 o'clock in the morning. From there, we were able to increase access by providing transportation so that sophomores and juniors can go to prom. Uh, we was able to increase access by having buses for February, April Acceleration Academy, so that students can again get extra support in any type of academic needs that they, they needed to support it. And that's it for, so far for this year for us, increasing our access. So we wanted to make sure everyone knows what the Meco program is. We wanted to increase access for our students and then we wanted to build community. Uh, our first one, we build community by getting our Boston families together to get to know each other. Uh, we did that with a cake decorating class, along with a paint night. Uh, the picture at the bottom is from a few weeks ago where we had our Parker students. We have four girls at the Parker and they were able to pick four friends from Reading and get to go out to cutie cake and decorate some cakes and use the time to, to build their relationships and just have a good time in a social environment. To build the community, one of the things I wanted to do is make sure that we are honoring our on-road students and acknowledging that and sending that out to the parents and giving the honor of much for our students. Reading Meco gear. We'll have a lot more gear coming within the next week, but that's important to me for like branding and pride into our school and our program. The most, one of the biggest things for the success of my district was the PTO. Uh, I met with every PTO in our district. We went over the video. Uh, and I talked about their, their, our need for their support and program and building these relationships between our kids. That has been amazing. We're actually meeting again next week. And we're, we're gonna come up with a plan to develop our host families. The PTO would then also reach out to Friends of Reading Meco to make sure there's some type of liaison and making sure that the message is getting out there to the community and our Reading residents. That is going to be extremely, um, important to, to doing this work and, and building the program. Another building community was creating the Meco office in the high school. That has been one of, you know, one of my top five highlights is walking into my office and seeing kids from Boston, from Reading, just hanging out, having a safe space to build, talk, and, um, just have a good time, have a, a home, a place for them to be. Many times I walk into the office and there's no kids from Boston, it's just kids from Reading. We have Reading Meco gear and just hanging out during lunch or during the study. And, um, that was one of the things that I felt like in my district, we could have made it better at. And that's how we really built it. And that's how I wanted to be here so that, making sure that all the kids know that every student in the Reading public school student is a Meco student. We're all participating in this diversity program to build strong relationships, to build a better future for our country and our society. And then the kite festival. The kite festival served as a few things, right? It was making sure that everyone understand this is a two-way street and bringing the Reading community to Boston so that they can see our community, see the beauty in our community and not just whatever it is that they see on the news. Uh, it was a way to, uh, Reading and our Boston families to build. And there was also an opportunity for me to promote our program to the community. Uh, there was a lot of people that I met there that day who were in other Meco districts wondering why their district wasn't there, wondering if they needed to transfer. Uh, other kids who are alumni, other parents alumni of Meco districts wanting to sign up their children for Meco and be in Reading because they were so happy just to see us out there in, in our community. So here we just have some of the pictures from the day. And what's next? So as I mentioned with the PTO, um, to really kick this off is the building of the host families. Uh, once we get that off the ground, I believe the Friends of Reading Meco mentioned, we have, I've had a lot of emails from people who don't have kids in the school but just wanted to open their homes. Uh, but we, I appreciate that, but I really wanna make this genuine. I really want kids to build friendships and relationships with their classmates. I really want our parents and the Reading parents getting to know each other and not just sending their kids to a person's home. So the events that Friends of Reading Meco will be doing, the events that we will be doing as a district and that PTOs will be doing, is also that the parents can get to know each other and feel comfortable with your kids staying a weekend in Reading and their kids staying a weekend in Boston. We are also working on our MLK dinner, which with the help of the Meco coordinators will coordinate different events for each elementary school to present. We'll have one year we'll be in Boston, the following year we'll go to Reading and we'll flip-flop to have an annual MLK dinner. We are looking to add an additional space for the high school students to give them more space in a bigger room because that is starting to grow. We're looking to have a Meco awards night at the end of the year where we're highlighting students for learning things about someone different, uh, from someone from a different country, someone from a different religion, or being kind and nice and, and being able to acknowledge them for that. And lastly, I wanna try to bring back the eighth grade DC field trip. This is an opportunity when I was in eighth grade, I went and revisited the Holocaust museum, but now we have the African-American museum. And this is a lot of great things that I believe we can, um, it's a good opportunity to bring the kids to visit. In this last slide, um, it says the results of Meco when it, when it's done right. And these pictures are all pictures of me, um, and my friends. When it started for me in the second grade, I was the only black kid in my class until middle school. This picture to the right is our class. This picture to my left is us at the Museum of Fine Arts. Coming to Boston was a normal thing for us in Wayland. And this, this field trip was at the Museum of Fine Arts during the African exhibit. And all these kids here, I still talk to. The top picture to my left that I'm pointing at now, um, that was actually my host family Eric. And this year, we all got together at a wedding back in October. And this picture, Eric is my right-hand man on my right side. And this picture, he's still on my right hand as my right-hand man. And, um, being able to get together almost 20 years after high school, to still talk with each other, still have our children play with each other is the benefit of what the Meco program would be. And that's what I want for all of our kids. And, um, I'm excited that we have a strong team, uh, from school committees, from Central Office to principals, um, across the district and other directors. And then we're going to build and get there. We do have a lot of work to do, but everyone is committed to doing the work. And that's it for this year. And again, thank you all for, for coming out.
So just two quick comments and then I wanna open it up for questions and comments from the committee. One is, I liked how on your first slide about building access, you listed off about 15 things that meaningfully improved access and then said, well, that's it for that. It was a lot. Uh, and then the second thing, I can vouch for the popularity of that room at the high school. I remember being there with you on a Friday afternoon. This classroom we're letting out in a constant flow of kids coming in and out, which was awesome. A few of them might have been so comfortable, they really missed the bus, but you took care of that as well. So, so thank you for that. So I wanna open it up. Any comments or questions for the rest of the committee and we'll open it up to the crowd as well.
I know you captioned that on just a few slides, but the tremendous amount of work Curtis has done this year has been incredible. The amount of change, the amount of excitement in our district. He has brought a renewed energy to the program. He has brought a renewed energy to the program. Um, in the high school especially, like Sean was saying, the high school is, um, an awesome place to be and that space is a is a great space. So, uh, we really appreciate the work that the the whole team has worked on this year, but especially Curtis and the type of commitment he has and the type of change that he brought to our community.
Curtis, well, I actually, I'll take you back on that. I walked by, I had a meeting with Principal Tracy yesterday and I walked by your office expecting to to wave, say hello to you and you weren't there, but the room was full. That was neat. Uh, but you, just your, your positive energy since the since the first time I think I met you was the end of the August, uh, retreat and maybe before that. But, you know, thank you for, uh, you know, opening at least my eyes to the things that, you know, I thought that we were doing that we aren't and and, uh, you know, and your transparency and and thoughtfulness in in bringing that to us and and, uh, you know, I hope you hang around for a while and and, uh, and keep doing what you're doing. Uh, you're you're well loved and you're doing a great job. So, thank you.
So I, I think it was the first time you spoke to the school committee. You said that your mission was to make the Reddick Metco program the best in the space. And you said it with such enthusiasm and such conviction. And I think you've shown us this year that you're gonna get us there, you're gonna get that program there. And, um, I agree with what Chuck was saying, just just the joy and enthusiasm you bring to the work and the amount that you have been able to accomplish in just one year to show us what this program could be for Reading and Boston families um, and where it can go, um, is amazing. It's inspiring. And I'm, I'm really appreciative for what you're doing and I'm excited to to see where we can go with it. Well, you guys said one more thing, echoing the sentiments of the rest of the, the folks on the committee about the the tremendous amount of work that's gone on this year and just the the excitement and joy that you bring, um, to the district as well around all this work. I think the majority of kids in buildings can identify their teachers, their principal, but probably have basically no idea anybody's on the school committee or anybody. Most people in central office, they probably know Dr. M. But I think majority of the kids, I have to also know your name, Curtis. So the fact that you were named a Dr. M. right up there, you're present, you're visible in our schools and it's really exciting.
So I, I think of a thank you, I also thank you a thank you to all of our, our building principals, whether we have a few today, who are, uh, working really closely with our families and our students day in and day out to follow the values and the goals of the Metco program. So thank you to three of our principals in front and all the others who weren't here with us tonight. Uh, I would also like to share too that, I'll start with a trivia question too. Uh, Mr. Martin has tricked me up a couple of times on this. We'll see if I can, if anyone can get this. I'm wondering if anyone can tell me how many Metco students there are in Reading Public Schools? If anyone want to raise their hand. If you want to raise it, you may get a wrong answer, so I just wanna, I don't want to embarrass the public in the media. How many, how many, how many, how many, uh, Metco students do we have?
There's one hand.
One hundred twelve. Incorrect. Twenty-eight, incorrect. Fifty-five, incorrect. Oh, you want a hint? How many? Fifty-two, incorrect. Forty, incorrect.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, incorrect, higher. I'll give you the immediate hint, yeah. Incorrect. So, anyone, well, that's a hint. How many, roses? A little more. We just got a hint back there. Teresa? Does anyone have the exact figure of that today? I would need to look back. Mr. Brand? Mr. Todd? Four, so it was, uh, right around slightly less than four thousand students. So, the last time we checked it was thirty-nine fifty more or less. So, the reason why, does anyone know why I shared that? Can anyone explain that? What can you explain? What? Four thousand students? Our Metco students? Daniella? So Daniella is saying that it's a good education and I agree and all of our students had Reading had that good education, so. And and Mr. Martin, another has asked, asked that trivia question to people when they join on. And I think it can be kind of turned into a joke, but it's for us, it's important to show that every student who is a Reading Public School student is a, is a Metco student. This is a program that is at the core of who we are as a district, what we believe in in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion. The types of that our students learn best in diverse learning environments. Uh, learn best with students with all different backgrounds, whether that's racially, ethnically, linguistically, uh, different life experiences. Um, so every student in Reading Public Schools is a Metco student and that's something that we believe at our core. So again, anyone would like to come up to sharing your actions, thoughts, or questions, but, um, again, next time, we all know, four thousand is the answer. Anyone?
I have a question, but I need to mic them all, I don't know. Curtis, all those bullets that you put up about adding the Metco coordinators and all the first, we say that you've done a fantastic job. Because I felt so Metco director, I asked, say, go on, please. But in all those numbers and all those bullets, when do we get Curtis in power? He may not fit like it, but I feel like he's taken on a whole lot.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, the Metco coordinators at the elementary school is, is gonna be a lot of help. Um, and one thing I thought, I forgot what like what's next, is, I mean, the ultimate goal is to have a coordinator in every single building. So next, we're trying to figure out how do we get coordinators in both our middle schools and our high school. And, um, but yes, I appreciate that. And, um, and I'm good, I'm good. I know you, I thank you for recognizing that, but all I need is from everyone from Boston, everyone from Reading to participate, show up, um, be involved in the events that friends of Reddick Metco was doing and the event that we're doing as a district. If we can get that consistent for both our Reading and Boston communities, uh, then that's all the help that I need.
I'd love, this is a front, rather, platform for so many things. I'd love it. Thank you. Uh, I'll share one other thing too on the Metco coordinators. Curtis spoke a little bit. So in the budget this year for next year is a, uh, five, uh, elementary Metco coordinator slash, uh, school counselors uh, in every one of our schools. So what that holds is it's a new role. The role is, first of all, in terms of the Metco coordinators, to be a direct liaison between our Boston resident families, Boston resident students, uh, and the, the Metco program. Uh, and also to be a school counselor and social worker to all students, Boston residents and Reading residents in our community. So we think that having that role will not only support Curtis, but also provide more support to all of our families and to our students. I'd also say that we've hired two of those roles already. We've hired an educator at Killam. We've hired, uh, also an educator at, uh, at Encirque. Both are educators of color. I will share that we also view this role, it's critically important that in a district that is, right now, our staffing, our staff is ninety-eight percent white. We believe that we have a lot of work to do to have a, a educator force that resembles the diversity of our students. Um, so we realize that we need to, uh, find ways to recruit, retain staff of color. We're encouraged that, uh, in these roles, these first two roles, that, uh, we found we've got excellent, awesome school counselors in these roles. Um, it is important for our students of color to be able to see, uh, students of, uh, educators of color. It's also important for our white students to be able to work with educators of color in our district. So we're excited, uh, initially for that and certainly, uh, that's not just unique to those roles, but also as a district, uh, hiring, uh, candidates of color throughout our district is also a continued priority. So I just wanted to share that, as you asked, spoke a little bit about those roles, given up to you that this is where we stand with the hiring of those roles too. And I, I see a couple of hands.
I'm glad that you touched upon the, uh, staff of color, we needed that. But maybe it's the wording in your, your, for the hiring process. Because I was on the committee that, um, hired Curtis that we, we voted in. But the first round that we had, we had to read, I did a portion of it. We had to rewrite. Lack of better words or the position, the summary of the position. It had to include first words, diversity inclusion words, in order for us to get someone of color. Because the first round that you gave us, I'm not sure where they came from, but that's why we had to have a second round to get the, the amount of people of color that we did. So maybe it's your wording that could use to help.
Right.
The job description needs to be.
Uh, so yeah, absolutely right. And, uh, we, we have addressed that and the way we went about hiring our coordinators, the way we really go hire, um, any staff member to and, uh, to try to encourage staff of color to apply. So yes, uh, when you're trying to do that, the wording and job descriptions is important. Um, having patience to allow people to apply instead of moving so quickly. And then, uh, as we've been going through this process, um, even if it's for, for people of color, uh, non-people of color, we're looking for, what is your cultural add to our district? What are you gonna bring that we don't have that we need? Uh, so that's another thing that we talked about with our HR director and, um...
I appreciate you raising that. And we realize that the hiring process, it goes all the way from, uh, recruitment, how are we recruiting? Also, what is, you know, job descriptions, interview, how are we making sure the process, everyone on board, you know, uh, understands and is on the same page with how we're looking at candidates and their qualifications? So I think you gave a perfect example of one space where we need to do better. And I think we're doing some work, but also realize that as part of the hiring process, there's a lot of phases that we need to do to make sure that we can get the educators that we want for our students. So thank you, thank you for raising that feedback. Okay, any other questions or comments? Mrs. Stroud?
Um, I just want to say that we don't just need, um, counselors and coordinators, we also need educators. Um, because they're not ju, the students don't just need counseling, um, and, um, social workers. They need to see educators. Um, we need to get more education, uh, educational curriculum, um, cultural curriculum. We need to just, and be open to just diversifying a lot of areas. I know that we're working on that at the high school. Um, I strongly recommend when we start hiring for the high school that we do include a good amount of students because the people at the high school are going to be working with the students and they need to understand the student demographic that they're working with. Um, and they definitely need to be, um, part of that hiring process. Not just one or two, but maybe, you know, two from Reading, two from Boston. Because again, these, these are people that they're gonna be working with in high school. It's a little different than elementary, as we all know. Um, elementary students gravitate to anybody that makes them happy, right? High school students, you gotta do a lot more. And so they have to be willing and ready to understand the students that they're working with because it's not as easy. A lot of you have already raised grown kids, so, who've graduated college or high school. Just understanding that they don't just need social workers, they need educators, they need principals, they need, um, nurses. They need it all throughout the, um, curriculum and through a, education.
Um, I'm not sure how I forgot this, but speaking to, you know, Shalala, you reminded me. Um, I also, I forgot to mention that next year we will have a race class at the high school for our juniors and seniors. Um, I'm extremely excited about that because I'm gonna co-teach it, uh, with our history director. Uh, and then also the class is built off of exactly what we did in Wayland High School. Uh, my teacher in Wayland, who taught it for forty-plus years, has been working directly with me one-on-one to build the curriculum, sending me, uh, course materials. Uh, and I've been excited to obviously reconnect with my old high school teacher. But, you know, I've taken race classes in high school. Um, I've taken it when I was at Clark Atlanta as a student and I've taken it at UMass Boston. And my high school class was by far the best. Um, so I'm extremely about, excited about that. And, um, that, next year will be the fresh year to kick it off and we'll be growing it and, uh, moving from there.
Um, well, that race course then trickle-down, um, maybe, um, diluted some for the younger grades because I believe the education starts, um, as early as preschool. Because we don't learn, we don't wake up hating people, we learn it. Um, so I think it's something that's taught from the bottom up.
Yeah, so that was one of the things that, uh, we also talked about July 5th when, uh, Dr. Hur and, um, Dr. Miller just met. Um, you know, for me as a student, we talked about race all the time. Talking about race in elementary school is completely different than middle school and high school, but we was privy to it, uh, was exposed to it, uh, and in a healthy way that brought us all together and made us think. So what did that look like? Uh, it was, obviously, I talked about it from the beginning, yeah, it was the imagery. Um, and before we entered the building, inside the building, in our classrooms, the books that we read. Um, you know, during Black History Month, it wasn't just Marlon the King, Malcolm X. Uh, one of the stories I tell is that, uh, in the third grade I was given Supremacy Truth and I was upset because I had no idea who Supremacy Truth was and I wanted Marlon the King. Um, my teacher told me, get what you get, don't get upset. And I learned about something new, someone new that I didn't know about. Um, so these are all things that we are definitely working on, um, and building towards. So yes.
So thank you very much and, um, just want to let you know, guy, and I very like the Metco program because I used to have my daughter, now thirty years old, used to be on program, on the Metco program. At that time, the office for Metco used to be over, human street over there, okay? But, so I have a question, my question to be a little big outside that. Because the thing will happen now, I would say. Did we have a possible way we could ask for, to add metal detectors on all the school? Would be a safety for the teacher and for the student?
Uh, yeah, just one thing I'll say to that. Uh, you know, we've not had any discussions to date about metal detectors. The, the, the town of Reading did approve, I think, a four million dollar or so project around school and building security a couple of years ago and most of those, most of those enhancements were in the schools and most of those enhancements have been made. So things like, um, you know, ensuring that there are, you know, only secured doors to enter the building when school is in session and improving the, uh, the, you know, the video systems and other things that sort of enhance security and enhance law enforcement's ability to respond in the case of an issue. Uh, the question of metal detectors has not, has not, it's come up, uh, it's not come up in discussions in Reading. But, um, we have invested quite a bit in enhancing the security in our schools. Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Martin or otherwise?
Not a question, but a thank you. Daniella had surgery last year, July. So for the first part of school, she was in a wheelchair in a car. And I just want to say thank you, Mr. Curtis, for preparing and providing, you know, just everything for her life to be a little bit easier. Dr. King at Goodenham has been awesome, I'm gonna miss her. Um, and just the, 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 the parent who sees her when she's outside in a wheelchair, the student, the students who like, you know, assist her, like she can't go to her coffee and someone is always there to assist her. Um, the parent from Metco who will send a text or will call and, uh, check up on her. It's, I really do appreciate everything and she's at Goodenham and she has been awesome.
Anyone else?
Hi, as you guys all know, I'm a student that attends Reading Memorial High School. I just had a question. Um, we wanted to hang flags that supported different, um, communities that represented us, like basically like, for example, my flags are the Asian flag and the Puerto Rican flag, different ethnic flags. Um, we were told that we couldn't hang them in the high school because it was a fire hazard. But, um, we have just gained information that other schools do have flags hung up and walking into this school just reminded me of this, um, seeing my flag hung up in the cafeteria. I don't know if that's the cafeteria, but, um, that just felt really welcoming. I just wanted to know why we wouldn't have been able to do. I just wanted to know why we wouldn't have been able to do it in Reading Memorial High School and if we can get that going.
Great, great question. So I also, I believe I'm meeting with the group here on Tuesday, on the 23rd, 10, 12 a.m. And I apologize, I had to push our meeting back. So I was supposed to meet with this group to be able to speak about flags, particularly the Pan American flag to be hung in some of our schools. So we're discussing that on Tuesday. And to be honest, I don't have a lot of the context on why, that's a, it would be a barrier. So hearing this traditional context, I'll come prepared, we're meeting on Tuesday, to have some more of the background, to know if there's certain things in place that would hold us back, that I can work to try to possibly resolve some of those things. So I can't answer that on the floor because I don't have, I don't have the answer. But I will be prepared to speak to that when I meet with you on Tuesday. And I'm hopeful that we can, and the way that you speak about that, the way that make you feel welcome and included and a sense of belonging when you walk into the cafeteria, I think is really important. So I look forward to the conversation.
Just one comment, on the Pan American flag that they're going to be meeting with you about, they were looking to have it hung on all the flag poles at each of the schools. But due to the new flag policy that the government has now put in effect, we understand that that's not possible, but they're talking about like within the school building.
Yeah. So I'm, in the conversation, we can talk about everything. And I certainly, as I shared earlier on tonight, I think the most powerful thing to make change is student advocacy. So whether there's policies or procedures or things that are stuck, I think that you advocating, I appreciate this, the students sent me an email and asked me to have this conversation. So I'm eager to have the conversation. And I think generally, we can work through barriers if we can reach a shared understanding of why it's important for students, particularly around making students feel safe walking into our schools. So thank you.
Okay, last call on this topic. Great.
One thing.
She got one more in, go ahead.
I lied, it was one more thing. I just wanted to recognize Chet, Dishna Chatterjee. She is Reading's new diversity and equity and social justice person. And so I wanted to welcome her.
That's a, for a segue to our next agenda item, which is Dr. Chatterjee. So I do want to, we have one more guest presenter. I want to take this one out of order as well, if that's okay with the committee. So I'll make a motion that we take out of order, item E4, the paralegal liaison assignment. Is there a second? I saw Erin first, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, we'll take it out of order. So Dr. Chatterjee, I'd love to invite you up to tell us a bit more about your role in the advisory group that you're creating and then we'll have a brief school committee discussion.
Hi, everyone, sorry, I have a really bad throat situation going on, but it's not COVID, so keep it free. I'm the new director of Equity and Social Justice, based out of the Reading Public Library. I'm based out of the library when I exist as a shared resource across town. One of the first things that we're getting started with is creating a advisory board. We have town liaisons from across all departments, including schools. We have some amazing students who are coming on board, which is what I'm most excited about. And of course, parents, residents, business owners. It's really a very diverse group of people who feel excited about it and decided to come on board. We are still accepting applications. So the deadline is, I believe, June 1st. All of the information is available on the town website. So if you're interested, please do feel free to shoot me an email. As the students shared, one of our first events that we're kind of co-facilitating with the SOC group is Juneteenth. We have a movie night, we are getting Central Lewis and April, sorry, I can't remember his name.
Jamel.
Jamel, Jamel Adams. Two guest speakers who are about the event. And then the students are also planning to do like a fundraiser on the side. It's going to be on Washington Park in Reading. Hope to see some of you there, please try to make it. We're hoping it's going to be a lot of fun. So thank you for having me here, very excited.
Okay, so we can formally assign a liaison tonight because that's Tom's role. But I wanted to open it up for school committee members who might be interested in representing us as a liaison on that advisory group. I'm happy to raise my hand first if nobody's falling all over themselves.
How often do you anticipate the group meeting?
So we're planning to meet about once every month, third Wednesdays, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. We'll try to do a hybrid. We want to do it in person at the library, but we'll also have like a Zoom running in case folks can't make it. That's the schedule.
All right, okay. Okay, so I think three of us could show up at any given meeting without running into any issues. So we'll pass Erin's name along to Tom to formally announce. And you'll probably see me in most of those meetings as well, so thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so our next item of business is Policy JFBB, which is the Policy on School Choice. So Erin, would you like to report out on behalf of the Policy Subcommittee and then we'll start the discussion?
Yeah. Feels very boring to follow all the excitement, enthusiasm, talk of applause. Okay, this one was pretty straightforward. So after the school committee voted to participate in school choice, Susan took a stab at some proposed edits. And on May 11th, the Policy Subcommittee met, myself, Chuck and Carla. We looked at Susan's proposed edits. We also compared it to the MASC, that's the Massachusetts Association of School Committee policy. We got into a little bit of a discussion around protected classes as compared to some of our other policies, which is why we proposed adding homelessness into number five. And this is also going to be approved by council.
So what you all have in the packet is a clean version, which essentially incorporates the edits. I think Tom mentioned there may have been one or two sort of just typos that need corrected as well. There was also a back and forth with, with our council this week, which Erin, I think you were on that email thread as well. But the back and forth with our council this week. And she clarified that one thing that's in the current clean version of the policy that we should probably address is the legal references at the bottom. 71-6, 71-6A, 76-6, 76-12. Those all relate to students coming to the Reading schools, but they're not specific to school choice, they're not really about school choice. So her suggestion was that we remove those references and only retain 76-12B in the, in the legal references section at the bottom. So I'm going to, when we make the motion, I'm going to propose that we make that adjustment. Is there any other discussion? Go ahead, Melo.
Did we, did we check the MASC for those legal references?
So the, the legal references, you know, in our policy, it's up to me, if I'm wrong here, I believe those are remnants from the old version of the policy. I don't think those were pulled directly from MASC necessarily.
No, that was just the old version. This is what Colleen, Colleen said we don't need it.
Okay, so any other, any other thoughts or edits on the clean version? Otherwise, I'll offer a motion to accept this with the edit about the legal references at the bottom. Okay, so I'm going to actually offer the vote, sorry, I realized what I did there. So I move that we, I mean, move to my motion so I don't wing it because that's always dangerous. Now I'm all flustered, here we go. All right, too many things going on at once. All right, I move to approve the edits to Policy JFBB as presented in the packet and revise on the floor. Is there a second? I think Carla needs to punch Chuck. So Carla is the second, any other discussion, go ahead, Chuck.
This is our first reading, correct?
So we're, we're using the Policy on Adoption policy, which allows us, if the edits are submitted to the committee more than a week in advance, and they were submitted to us last week, to be able to, to be able to amend the policy on a single meeting. And since these edits were generally sort of modernization edits versus, you know, fundamental ones, I think Tom saw it as appropriate to use, use that process.
Nice one, Claire. I'm not sure if this is for Tom or Susan. So we had, we had a whole discussion about bullet number six and the language there. Ultimately, we decided to leave the language, but we wanted to make sure that it means what we think it means, which is that if, if family has a child already in the district through school choice and the subsequent year, they have a sibling applying, that sibling will automatically get a spot if there is one. They won't actually have to go through the lottery, they would just get a spot if there is one. Is that, that was our understanding. But so we, we had a whole debate about the language. So ultimately, we said, we'll leave it, we'll just clarify that it means that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion before we take a vote on this one? Comment from the audience, no? All right, want to give you a shot. Okay, all in favor, or all, yes, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, carries five to zero. So our next order of business, and we've got just two more pieces on the agenda here, is to approve the membership of the RMHS Track Renaming Committee. So as the memo in the packet describes, I think two meetings ago, we voted to create this committee. We identified sort of, you know, generally who the membership would be. And I think we appointed Chuck at that time as the school committee liaison. Tom Wise has worked in the interim to sort of fill out the rest of the roles here. So the building principal, obviously, the relevant one in this case is Kevin Tracy. Tom Zao worked with the track coaches to select a student representative, so that'll be Olivia Rotondo. The select board appointed Carlo Bocci with this role. Historical commission appointed Christine Keller. And then Tom worked with Chamber, with our economic development coordinator, maybe with a few other folks to solicit applications for business leaders. And he's recommended John Meads. John is a Reading resident, he has several kids in the school district. He ran track against Alroft as a Stonem High grad. And so he, he holds himself as somebody who's fairly unbiased about this. And, you know, was somebody who sort of directly benefited from, from House efforts over the years. So, so that's who Tom has proposed for us to include as the business leader. So the motion on this would be move to approve the membership of the RMHS Track Renaming Committee as detailed in the packet. Is there a second? And then I'll, Chuck seconds. Any discussion or questions about this? Any discussion from the audience? Okay, so move to the vote, all in favor? And all opposed? And it carries five to zero. And our last order of business tonight is to approve the final FY '23 operating and capital budgets as appropriated by town meeting. So I'll, we'll take the motion in a moment, but Ms. Baton, I'll kick it to you to provide any background you'd like.
Thank you.
Press the button on left which is on green.
Got it, thank you. Included in your pack this evening is a memo sharing with you our recommendation to school committee to put forward a final vote, a final approval of the FY '23 operating and capital budgets. The FY '23 operating budget appropriated by annual town meeting And this is for the FY '23 fiscal year. Our capital budget approved by town meeting totals $122,000 for FY '23.
And I'm probably waiting to ask this, but just curious. So the RISE playground, is my understanding that as we go through the MSBA process, we're still considering the placement of RISE and the potential of moving RISE? In which case, there's a potential that having a preschool playground outside our high school doesn't make sense. So I know this is only for a design, but I'm just curious how that falls into the future plans.
We're, as you know, we're entering the, we've entered the eligibility period for our Killam Elementary School. And if the new building contains our RISE program, then we will be repurposing the RISE area within the Reading Memorial High School. This first year, the $12,000 is allocated for design only. So what we could, we won't know the next phase in terms of shifting eligibility of our Killam Elementary School to the feasibility portion for about another year. What we'd like to do is to move forward, engage an architect in the design and hold there. By the end of FY '23, we'll know more about our status than Killam Elementary School and then we can make decisions.
Thank you.
I just had one question. You know, we voted to accept the $2 million in arbit funding this evening. How is that actually going to flow as those dollars are spent? Is it going to sit in a revolving account and paid directly from there?
Yeah, so Sharon Angstrom, our finance director, town accountant, has set up the funds in a special revolving account and has provided us with that account number. We're going to be issuing the balance of year one's curriculum order this week. We've met with the vendor, we'll place that order that will take us through the next school year. Also, I'm working with the procurement officer, Alison Jenkins, at the town to develop a brief three-year agreement for FY '24, '25, '26 with the vendor. And we'll be issuing that money end of June 30th in order to ensure that the funds that are sitting in the revolving fund are duly obligated for our budget requirements.
Thank you. Any other comments from the committee before I open it up to the, to the audience? Okay, Mrs. Strad, does you have a question or comment?
I just have one question. If we are potentially planning to move RISE to Killam and we include an assessor and an architect, isn't that funds that we're, we have to pay that person that could be on hold until we decide what we're doing with Killam? That might be aimlessly spent?
Yes, at this time, we have $12,000 set aside for design development. We don't need to engage the architect immediately to develop the design on plan. FY '24, we have dollars set aside for the actual construction of the playground. But until we go through the eligibility process with Killam, it's unlikely that will be spent on those funds.
Okay, my last comment is, as an educator whose classroom is directly above the RISE preschool playground, I definitely vote on moving it from the high school because it's quite distracting. It's nice to see the kids playing, but it is quite distracting as high school students are trying to learn and little ones are outside having the time of their life. So that's just my thought.
Okay, any other comments or questions before we move to the vote? Okay, so the motion on this one, I move to approve the final FY '23 operating and capital budgets as appropriated by annual town meeting in April of 2022. Is there a second? Chuck seconds, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? And it carries five to zero. And I will entertain one final motion. Chuck, would you like to second? Motion to adjourn by Carla, seconded by Chuck, all in favor? And all opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.